Welcome one, welcome all. And for the invocation, we have Reverend Dr. Joyce Rose Scott from the Tabernacle Worship Center at Pleasant Grove. Welcome.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We will all stand for this prayer. Most gracious and everlasting Father, we come before your throne of divine grace and mercy this evening at this former session of the Virginia Beach City Council. I ask, oh Lord, that you intercede in God, each member of this leadership with knowledge and understanding that has been purposed and bestowed upon them. Let's say your love, oh God, your peace and your unity among each individual who's here today and each organization represented. And Father, we will always give you the praise and the honor. In the master's name of Jesus Christ, we do pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk, do we have the roll call?
Yes, sir, all present.
Okay. Do I have a motion for the certification of the closed session?
So moved.
Second. Okay, the vote is open.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you have certified the closed session to be an accorded recess.
Okay, we have a number of minute dates and times, so we're going to do them individually, should anybody have any type of refusal or exceptions, okay? Okay, do I have a motion for the approve the minutes of the informal and formal sessions of April 2nd, 2019?
So moved.
A second.
Okay, vote is open on that.
By a vote of nine to zero, with Mr. Berlich and Mr. Tower both abstaining, you have approved the minutes as submitted.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the special formal session of April 9th, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, vote is open.
Again, a vote of nine to zero, you approve the minutes as submitted with Mr. Berlich and Tower abstaining.
Okay. And number three, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the informal and formal sessions of April 16th, 2019?
So moved.
A second.
Vote is open.
By a vote of seven to zero, with Ms. Abbott, Mr. Berlich, Mr. Moss, and Mr. Tower abstaining, you have approved the minutes as submitted.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to come, I was not, I was out of town for that day, which is why I was abstained.
Okay, thank you.
I was as well.
Okay, thank you both. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the special formal session of April 23rd, 2019?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Vote's open.
By a vote of nine to zero, you have approved the minutes as submitted.
Okay. And finally, number five, do I have a motion to approve the special formal session of April 24th, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, vote is open.
By a vote of ten to zero, you've approved the minutes as submitted.
Okay, thank you. Our next order of business, do we have Jimmy Wood here? Welcome. Okay, I would like to read this proclamation. Whereas Virginia Beach has been a place of human occupation for over fifteen thousand years, and whereas the ships of the first permanent English settlers and Virginia Beach landed in Virginia Beach in 1607, and whereas the English Crown granted 5,350 acres to Adam Thoroughgood here in 1635, and whereas the Thoroughgood House, a national historic treasure, is celebrating its 300th anniversary in 2019, and whereas the Cape Henry Lighthouse, a national historic landmark, was completed in 1792 as the first public works project of the United States America government, and whereas Virginia Beach has twenty-two individual historic properties and five historic districts listed in the National Register of Historic Places, and whereas Virginia Beach has seventy-four individual historic properties listed in the Virginia Beach Historical Register, and whereas Virginia Beach has sixteen local historic and cultural districts that have been established to protect and preserve some of the city's most important historic resources, and whereas the National Trust of Historic Preservation created Preservation Week in 1971 to spotlight grassroots efforts in historic preservation in America, and whereas states and communities across the country now recognize the month of May as Historic Preservation Month, and whereas the Princess Anne County Virginia Beach Historical Society was chartered in 1961 and has actively worked to preserve Virginia Beach history for the past fifty-eight years, and whereas the City of Virginia Beach Council established the Historic Preservation Commission in 2008 to advise them on all issues related to the preservation of historic buildings and structures and sites in the city, whereas the mayor and city council support the preservation of Virginia Beach's diverse and rich heritage and historic resources. Therefore, I, Robert M. Dyer, Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, hereby do recognize May 2019 Historic Preservation Month. Woo! (applause)
This is your thanks to all of you on behalf of the faithful city. Shameless vote.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
And Mayor Dyer, I just wanted to thank you on behalf of the Historic Preservation Commission and the members of city council. Our chairman, Bill Gambrell, sends his regards. He has an important historical date today to celebrate himself, his wife's birthday, so he couldn't be here with us, but in the preservation of his marriage, I think it's better that he is there with his wife tonight. But we're very proud to be advocates and advisors to the city council on issues of historic preservation, the building structures and sites located in the City of Virginia Beach and the historic Princess Anne County. The Historic Preservation Commission is extremely grateful of the leadership that city council has shown on the issue of historic preservation, beginning with our, the establishment of our commission in 2008. We've also been fortunate to work with many of you on recent dedications for historic road markers and the ribbon cutting at the Dune Restoration Project at the Cape Henry Lighthouse, which was just cut this past weekend, and I'd encourage all of you to go check out the great work that's been done there. On behalf of the commission, we also wanted to take this opportunity to voice our support for the proposal to transition the city-owned historic homes to the Department of Cultural Affairs. History is culture, and the Department of Cultural Affairs will be a great steward of these important local historic sites, ensuring that we preserve these sites and continue to educate future generations on Virginia Beach's rich history. As you've seen, we have a few of our members of the Preservation Commission here tonight, and so again, I just want to say thank you very much for this wonderful proclamation.
Thank you all very much, and thank you for your contribution.[534.91][534.91](applause) Now, as mayor, one of the privileges I have are reading proclamations to worthy groups, individuals, but at times it is more appropriate to have someone that is more involved in the actual process. And I have a proclamation here for the, on behalf of the North End Run Club, and it's only more appropriate that Aaron Rouse, I'm going to call you to come forward and read the proclamation, you know, to honor this group.[566.04][566.04](applause)
What a tremendous honor. Thank you, Mayor Dyer, for allowing me to, the opportunity to speak to this club, that means so much to me, you know, and it's a club that I think signifies and personifies what Virginia Beach is, openness, diverse, diverse and inclusive. This is a club that, no matter where you are, where you come from, you all accept it. You know, one of the point things that, right on, that I love from the very beginning is that we start together and we finish together. And you run at your own pace, you walk at your own pace, but to me, that signifies that no man, no woman, no child is left behind, and I'm so proud to be able to read this proclamation to this club, and I'll get started, I won't blame you. Whereas, on July 19th, 2016, North End Run Club was founded in Virginia Beach, Virginia by Barry Clark, and whereas the mission of North End Run Club is to get outside, be active, explore your city and, whereas North End Run Club is a free, community-driven organization which accepts all athletic abilities and hosts its weekly runs and events all throughout the city of Virginia Beach, and whereas what started as a small group, filled fifteen strangers, has organically grown to ever eleven hundred active members and events with a single attendance of over three hundred eighty people. Whereas, North End Run Club meets at different locations each week, highlighting different areas, local businesses, and pedestrians-friendly trails, including First Landing Park, Virginia Beach Boardwalk, Mount Trashmore Park, Virginia Aquarium and Science Museum, Pleasure House Point, North End Neighborhood, Lake Lawson, Lake Smith Natural Area, and various shared use paths and sidewalks around Virginia Beach. And whereas, outside of the weekly Tuesday evening runs, North End Run Club has assisted in beach cleanups, supported numerous local charities and small businesses, collectively raised funds for timely causes and fundraisers, supported local running events on the weekends, donated clothing and foods to both local residents and neighboring states in need, and encouraged the community to get involved in volunteering and voting. Now, therefore, on behalf of the mayor and city council of Virginia Beach, we do hereby, we do hereby recognize North End Run Club for their tremendous service to our community, and I encourage all citizens to familiarize themselves with this organization and their efforts, and witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Virginia Beach to be affixed the 16th day of April, 2016.[732.37][732.37](applause)
Speech, speech, speech.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Hi, Mayor Dyer, nice to meet you. Thank you so much, Councilmember Rouse. Wasn't prepared for a thank you speech, but I could speak off the top of my head. I remember the first time you showed up, it was kind of around when we were training for the crush and run, and I was so happy to just see you implement yourself into the community and just see what we were all about. One thing we never really do is get political, and one thing I've always talked about you is it's not about politics, so you've been a part of the community, you've seen what everybody is capable of and what we do, and I just wanted to thank the City of Virginia Beach for allowing us the space to do, to be able to freely meet throughout the city and highlight all the beautiful aspects. One thing, I'm from Suffolk, Virginia, but I moved to Virginia Beach, and I always thought the city is so beautiful, and I would meet people that just didn't really know certain areas in the city, and one thing I love to do is get people outside and just get them active and get them talking out of their comfort zones a little bit and do something great for the city and give back when we can, because what started as one thing completely turned into a different, a different thing. And one thing these people really love doing is giving back to the city, so I love being the head of them, and really, me, I couldn't do this without, I mean, there's probably seventy, eighty people in here right now, and it's a big group, and I couldn't do this, so I'm stepping this in the path of them, and I just want to thank you all so much, again, for acknowledging this, it means the world to me.
One of the things that I appreciate more every day serving as mayor and with this council is the strength of Virginia Beach or the people of Virginia Beach, and the true, two groups here that had proclamations read in their honor are a sterling example of the greatness of the people of the City of Virginia Beach. Thank you and God bless you.[877.37][877.37](applause) Yeah, so they gotta go run now, so yeah. I wish I could go with you.
Tuesday night, you're running?
I gotta, I gotta start working out again.
Tonight, right?
You're running, I'm filming.
You gotta pick another night, Tuesday.
Bobby's running.
I can't run on Tuesdays.
Right.
It'd be a sixty-eight-year-old runner, my goodness.
Let me know when you go.
Okay.
I'll watch.
Good, thanks.
But you run at your own pace, so there's no, you don't have to keep up with anybody, and we all finish together, so.
Yeah, but I would have no pace, that's the problem.
That's the good one.
I will just wait a second here. Okay, we have a couple of public hearings. Number one is the sale of excess city property, A, on 1.295 acres on the northwestern corner of Princess Anne Road and Winterberry Lane, and B, eleven point seven acres on Bonnie Road, okay?
So, Mayor, so we have about eleven speakers for A, but we do not have any other speakers for B or any of the other public hearings, so.
Okay, so we'll hear the speakers on part A.
First?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Call the others and we'll do the consent.
Let's do consent.
Do the consent first.
Yeah, so if you call the other hearings, then we'll do the consent, yeah.
Okay.
You'll need to do that.
Okay. All right. The other thing is the sale of easements over city property, interfacility traffic area, ITA, A, 2.195 plus acres on North Landing Road, B, 2.101 acres on North Landing Road.
No speakers on either item.
Okay. And three, lease of property on 2089 Indian River Road residential dwelling.
No speaker, sir.
Okay, we revert it back on sale of excess property, number one, A.
Consent agenda.
Yes, John.
Just want, just to make sure, because I know when we don't use the written record but use the oral, I think we just need to amend that to say plus or minus, so we don't tie the city attorney, because I know.
Not a problem, I will reread that. Sale of excess property, part A, 1.95 plus or minus acres on northwest corner of Princess Anne Road and Winterberry Lane. Thank you, Mr. Moss.
Two point two nine five.
One point two nine.
Two nine five.
Two nine five.
Okay, I'll tell you what, if it's okay, well, prior to doing that, we'll have Mr. Wood do the consent agenda.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move for approval under consent agenda of the following items. Under ordinances resolution, item J1, ordinance to declare excess restrictive easements over city property located on North Landing Road and the interfacility traffic area and authorize the city manager to sell the same to the United States of America. Item two, ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a lease of city-owned residential dwelling for up to five years at 2089 Indian River Road. Item three, ordinance to amend City Code Section 12-2 liability for expenses incurred in fighting certain fires. Item four, resolution to establish a city council policy regarding advertisement of public notices for tax or fee increases noting that councilmembers Wood and Wilson are voting no. Item five, ordinance to grant a non-exclusive franchise agreement with XT Net Systems Virginia LLC regarding install and maintain network facilities for wireless telecommunications services in the public streets and rights of way. Item six, ordinance is to authorize the city manager to execute amendment number seven to the multi-year agreement between the United States of America and the city regarding preventing encroachment and incompatible development in the vicinity of Naval Air Station Oceana. Item seven, ordinance to accept an appropriate A, $400,000 from Home Associates of Virginia to CIP 7-048 Sherwood Lakes Drainage Improvements regarding stormwater drainage improvements within Sherwood Lakes neighborhood. Seven B, $66,000 from Virginia Beach Library Foundation to the FY 2018-19 Library Department Operating Budget regarding purchase of an outreach vehicle. Item seven C, $80,000 from Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Development Services to FY 18-19 Human Services Operating Budget regarding increased staffing to support emergency services crisis pre-screens. Item seven D, $33,716 from Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services to FY 18-19 Human Services Operating Budget regarding forensic discharge planning from jail for individuals with serious mental illness, substance abuse disorders. Item E, $294,657 from Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services to FY 18-19 Human Services Operating Budget regarding staff, law enforcement officers at the Crisis Intervention Team Assessment Site. Item F, $30,000 from Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services to FY 18-19 Police Department Operating Budget regarding enhanced efforts to address internet crimes against children. Item eight, ordinance to transfer $328,450 from General Fund Reserve contingencies to the FY 18-19 Office of Voter Registration and Elections Operating Budget regarding costs associated with the primary elections on June 11th, 2019.
I call a public hearing on planning.
Item K1, Just Browsing LLC, SUSU Developers LLP for conditional use permit regarding a tattoo parlor 1612 Baskin Road, Lynnaven District. Item two, Donna and Robert German, German Living Trust for conditional use permit regarding a family daycare home at 212 Upperville Road in the Kempsville District. Item three, Armada Hoffler Tower 4 LLC for conditional use permit regarding a private college/university at 222 Central Park Avenue in the Bayside District. Item four, Verdi Salon and Spa LLC, Lake Jim, D1 LLC for conditional use permit regarding a tattoo parlor at 2137 Upton Drive in the Princess Anne District. Item five, Amy Turner Star Real Estate LLC for conditional use permit regarding a tattoo parlor at 4604 Pembroke Lake Circle in the Bayside District. Item six, Phil Kellum VBK Properties LLC for conditional use permit regarding assembly use in open air market at 2384 Princess Anne Road in the Princess Anne District, noting that is a deferral until May 21st, 2019. So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, vote is open.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you have approved the consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor Wood.
Okay, we go back to item, public hearing one, A, 1.295 plus or minus acres on the northwestern corner of Princess Anne Road and Winterberry Lane. Please call it.
Would you like to read this statement regarding speakers?
Okay. I want to remind everyone that the city council speaker policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for ten minutes applies only to planning items. As to all other items on the agenda, each speaker will be speaking individually or on behalf of a group will have three minutes to speak. Also, when speakers are called on each item, the clerk will call for those individuals who have signed up to speak. After those who have signed up to speak have spoken, the chair will ask if there are any other persons who wish to speak on the item at hand. Those speakers will be allowed to speak and will be asked to give their name, address, and telephone number for the clerk to record.
First speaker is Kathleen Hentley, and after Ms. Hentley will be Dan Williams.
Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Catherine Hentley. I'm a resident of Landstown Meadows, have been for over twenty-two years, and I am opposed to the property on the corner of Princess Anne and Winterberry Lane being considered We are a group of residents who represent those opposed to declaring the property off of Winterberry Lane and Princess Anne Road excess and rezoning it. Landstown Meadows has been very cooperative with the City of Virginia Beach and the infrastructure that has progressed over the last eleven years. We now have Landstown Commons, Landstown Center, CHKD, Wyknot's largest restaurant, expansion of Princess Anne Road, expansion of Holland Road, building expansion of Holloman Brown, and the Bio Center, which is soon to come. We ask that the city not lose sight of our residents and the densely populated neighborhood. We have 533 homes in Landstown Meadows alone, 428 homes in Landstown Lakes. We come here today because we are concerned about our neighborhood and its existence in this corridor. Landstown Meadows residents are unable to successfully exit or enter our neighborhood off of Princess Anne Road. Imagine sitting at the intersection of Winterberry Lane and Princess Anne Road, waiting to make a left onto Princess Anne Road toward the courthouse. You have vehicles coming down Princess Anne from the courthouse, vehicles waiting on Princess Anne Road to make a left into the community. At times, you could wait ten minutes plus to exit. Think about being the fifth car in line to make a left. Throughout Winterberry and numerous neighboring streets, there are traffic issues, speeding issues, flooding issues. Winterberry is one of the major roads in our community. It has houses on both sides of the streets, parked cars, lots of traffic, school buses, and individuals who cut through to Holland Road. Winterberry is difficult to maneuver. Families live on Winterberry, and it is dangerous. In regards to declaring this parcel excess, it will have a huge impact on an already constricted intersection and street. Also, taking away more green space can cause additional flooding issues to our neighborhood. The recent Holland Road expansion has caused those issues. We will address our community concerns throughout this presentation. We have submitted a presentation, this is the face page of it, in case you'd like to follow. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Dan Williams, and after Mr. Williams is Slaventa Chernova.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Dan Williams, and I have been a member of the Landstown community for thirty-four years. The following is a comprehensive plan from Virginia Beach Staff Planner, Dr. Stephen J. White, that pertains to our neighborhood. Dr. White was the staff planner for both 1.4 acre Wyknot LCC public hearing on October 14th, 2015, and the proposed 1.3 acre declaring property excess of Princess Anne Road and Winterberry Lane before his retirement. The comprehensive plan designates this area of the city as being in the suburban area. The general planning principles for the suburban area focus on preserving and protecting the overall character, economic value, and aesthetic quality of stable neighborhoods. Achieving these goals of preserving neighborhoods requires that all new development or redevelopment, whether residential or non-residential, either maintain or enhance the overall area. This is accomplished through compatibility with the surrounding attractiveness and the site building's environmental responsibility and livability. First, a three-story building and a parking lot on a 1.3 acre lot in a neighborhood that is very dense is not overall, is not in the overall character. It will most certainly degrade the economic value of the homes and is not aesthetically pleasing to the neighborhood. And the added traffic problems will degrade the livability. The traffic problems, a lot being concentrated for excess is 1.3 acres, too small of a proposed three-story building and the required parking spaces required by the 203 Alpha City zoning. The site plan is twenty-one spaces short of the rezoning, 203A zoning. The entrance to the small parking lot is in the entrance/exit area to the neighborhood and also across and near two neighborhood cross streets with traffic going in and out, and when the lot is full, it will cause congestion and already problematic entrance/exit to the dense neighborhood. As a solution to the parking shortages in a proposed three-story building, Mr. Nutter has requested to share twenty-one spaces on an off-site parking lot also owned by Tony D. Wyknot Pizza. This site is inside the Landstown Commons Shopping Center at Wyknot Pizza. In 2015, Wyknot Pizza also did not have the required parking spaces as per the 203 Alpha zoning. Due to legal restrictions and agreements, Wyknot could not use the Landstown Commons Shopping Center parking spaces. Wyknot had forty-four spaces but required seventy-two by the 203A zoning. Wyknot bought 0.4 acres of the city property and rezoned it to add thirty-two spaces. This leaves four spare spaces. Now, if shared lots are approved, would leave the three-story building short seventeen spaces, not meeting the 203 zoning. But, to get to this shared spaces asked for by Mr. Nutter would require overflow drivers to exit the main three-story building parking lot, turn right onto Winterberry Lane, turn right onto Princess Anne Road, and that can take up to ten minutes, as previously stated, through, because of the stop sign and cross traffic, then drive almost a quarter of a mile to the light and make a right turn onto Landstown Commons Shopping Center, the length of the shopping center pizza.
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, thank you very much, and can I read this last part?
Oh, I'm sorry, sir, we got to be.
Please vote for declaring this 1.3 property excess and allow us to have a livable neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
So, Vatwana.
Okay.
Was there a presentation that?
It was emailed, I believe, to city council. Who else?
Do we have a picture of the property we could put up? It would be nice to have a picture of the property.
It would be nice to have a picture of the property up.
It's emailed.
Can you forward it again?
I can. I can't do it from...
No, that's okay.
I can forward it tonight, yes.
Okay.
Again, are we ready?
Yeah, could we have the next speaker, please?
Slavetlana Shernova, and then Morgan Carrick.
Hello, my name is...
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Slavetlana Shernova, and my presentation is about street parking. Lanstown Meadows has narrow streets with a lot of curves. Cars park on both sides of the street because families grow, teenagers get cars, most driveways are single car. Winterberry is not the only street with this issue. Other streets next to the entrance off of Princess Anne are also overfilled with cars. A drive-through on the streets closest to the parcel was conducted on a regular weekday night in July of 2018. You have presentation if you want to. I have all the numbers for each of the streets, how many cars was parked on each of the streets, and streets used for that drive-through were Twinflower Lane, Chikory Street, portion of Winterberry, and portion of Barbary Lane. Total number of cars on that, those streets, reached 106. The Twinflower Lane alone, that is about 1,000 feet long with one end facing the parcel, had 40-plus, 40 cars. And imagine if there's overfilled lot where those cars gonna park. They're gonna park on those streets that's already, like, overstaffed. On the next page in your presentation, you can see pictures from Twinflower Lane, and you can see it is basically a one-way street making it a challenge to maneuver for two cars coming in opposite directions. Cars are, like, literally back-to-back on that street. On the... Another drive-through was conducted on March 16, 2019. This time, cars were counted on all main streets and streets closest to the parcel. Number of cars, parked cars listed for each street is in the table and on the map below on that page. And you can see that Barbara and Winterberry have very high number of parked cars, 52 and 54. Twinflower Lane still has a very high number considering its length, 32. On the next page, you can see pictures from each of those streets that were used for second drive-through. Total number of cars reached 211 on those drive-through streets. Now, keeping overfilled streets in mind, let's add traffic data that was pulled from the city of Virginia Beach website. This data shows that high travel throughout Winterberry is between 9:00 AM and 3:00 PM, exactly that time hour, so it's not just morning and evening, the volume throughout the day. Can you... And can you imagine approximately 100 cars traveling on this small residential street within 15-minute interval? 300-plus cars within one-hour period. Next page has detailed reports from that study. Study was conducted in 2018. That was a recent study. It shows that total number of cars driving through the intersection of Princess Anne and Winterberry is 3,630 cars per day. That building will bring 600 cars more per day, about 600. And to make matters worse, there is another traffic, drive-through issue. It... Parcel will be called an excess and proposed building will be built. There will be even... The number for those cars will be... Drive-through cars will be even higher. We used two addresses on Holland Road to see where cars will be navigated through... From that building to route towards Nemo Parkway or towards Dam Neck. And yes, navigation maps, they can route people through the neighborhood.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And just, I oppose the declaring property an excess.
Thank you.
Morgan Carrick. After Ms. Carrick is Brenda Butler.
Welcome.
Okay. Good evening, members of the City Council. My name is Morgan Carrick, and I've been a resident of this neighborhood, Lanstown Meadows, for my entire life. As with any situation, I've seen things change in and around my neighborhood. I've seen the buildup of both Holland and Princess Anne Road to support the increased traffic flow. I've seen the creation of Lanstown Commons and Center with many businesses coming and going, leaving empty buildings from time to time. I've seen the dynamics of my community change. Growing up, I would frequently play outside, and my friends and I would venture all over the neighborhood. Now, kids often do not even leave their own front lawn. Growing up, kids would walk alone or with a friend down to the bus stop. You can see on the presentation packet provided on pages 15 and 16, the large number of bus stops spread throughout our community. Now, kids are often driven to school, or parents wait with their child before leaving for school. With increased traffic flow through my neighborhood, parents are very concerned for the safety of their children, and it only gets worse if this land is declared excess. The piece of land that is in question for rezoning is on... One of the only green spaces left for the neighborhood of Lanstown Meadows. Lots of people use this land as a park to take their dogs to run around or to play a game of soccer as a family. After seeing the buildup of many other areas around me and little green space left in return, I ask that you please do not declare this land as excess. By doing this, you would allow for more space for kids to just be kids. You would allow more space for residents to enjoy. You would allow an additional green space to serve as a buffer between residential and growing... And the growing Lanstown community, like the proposed Bio Park that is soon to come. I would like to thank you for letting me speak out against the proposed rezoning of the parcel of land.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Brenda Butler. And after Ms. Butler will be Karen Murphy.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Brenda Butler, and I've been a resident for 10 years of Lanstown Meadow, and I am opposed to the declaring excess to the property of Winterberry and Princess Anne for rezoning construction of a three-story building. I am here to speak to you today about the recurring flooding and storm waters. Flooding has become a big issue for our community in the last few years, overdevelopment in the area leading to barely any green space, which the young lady just spoke about. Elevated Holland Road brings more water on our streets, and we want to know will Bio Park get elevated as well? Water from Winterberry parcel will run off to the adjoining residential properties. Several residences already are having issues with the groundwater seeping in their houses from underneath. And we do have images in regards to the flooding that has been occurring since the development of all of these prop... All of these businesses. We have an image in regards to standing water on the Winterberry parcel that is being considered for the construction of this three-story building. And we also show that there is flooding on the streets as well in the entrance of the Winterberry where the three-story building is considering construction. The next image is the standing water, and we know that hurricane season is upon us. So then we have those rainwaters that will be entering into our neighborhoods due to all of the new construction. There's another image in regards to the standing water and saturated grounds regarding the space where our neighbors do take their animals to throw, you know, play or play soccer with their kids, different things like that. And then, in closing, we are asking, you know, and urging you guys that the removal of the trees from this parcel is the opposite of the solution to the increasing concern regarding flooding in our neighborhood. Several residents reported groundwater once again seeping into their houses from underground from all of this collection of water. The Winterberry parcel is the only remaining green space between Winterberry and Dam Neck on Princess Anne that can be an urban forest to our densely populated neighborhood. This parcel then can naturally absorb stormwater runoff from surrounding commercial developments and roads. So we hope that you take this into consideration today and keep our area safe for our children as well as, you know, not a harbor for water, rainwaters. Thank you for your...
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I have one question, if I could.
John.
We don't have the benefit yet of that presentation, but could you point out on that map on Winterberry where the flooding that you referenced is taking place on the current street?
The Why Not restaurants, there is... That is the lot that is sitting right next to that. I cannot determine the location.
I understand where that is. I'm referring to where the flooding occurs on... You said occurs on the actual street itself.
Yes, sir.
Could you point out on that? That's Winterberry going up? I'm just curious, where on Winterberry is that flooding actually occurring? Oh, absolutely. Please approach, please.
This is the image, and everyone, and I take that exit to head to work.
So it's this direction of the median is where the flooding?
Yes, this is it right here. This is our entryway to...
Right, I got that.
Yes.
Okay.
And that is water.
And what's the approximate depth of that water, would you say?
Um, the approximate depth...
Is it up over the curb?
No, I wouldn't say...
About two or three inches in?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No problem.
Look forward to seeing the presentation.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Karen Murphy. Karen Murphy, and after Ms. Murphy will be Warren Murphy.
I'm gonna see if the people in the back can hear me, because everybody's saying, "I can't hear what anybody is saying." My name is Karen Murphy, so I thank you all for allowing me to speak today. I have been a Lanstown Meadows resident for 18 years, and I come from New Jersey. What I want to talk about today is poll and people. The poll that was done by the Civic League, and I know that you all have received a letter in 2017, was actually performed online on Nextdoor. That poll had gained 111 votes, and out of that 111 votes, 85% was opposed. They were opposed to a building on Winterberry, and they were opposed... Winterberry Princess Anne, and they were opposed to the entry onto Winterberry. So the letter was a little bit misleading because it said, "Just as far as the low population, that was opposed." And in turn, I think we have to look at the whole picture. How many residents, but not only how many residents, how many votes, how many opposition? So what we did as Lanstown residents, nine of us went around and canvassed the neighborhood. There were 533 homes in Lanstown, and we went door-to-door knocking from September 25 to October 5 of 2017. We started up again in January of 2018, and the requirement was you had to be 18 years of age to vote, just like a democracy. And you had to fill out the paperwork, the date, the signature, and whether you were opposed or for. We had 397 votes that were cast out of 277 homes, 100% opposed. So the residents are very much against changing that from open space. So where are we? The property should not be considered excess. The property should not be rezoned. It is already the ownership of City Council, and I know that City Council sometimes buys property to make it open space. You already own it. We need the city's help. I, along with 396 residents, oppose considering this excess. Thank you.
Thank you.
Warren Murphy. And after Mr. Murphy will be Jennifer Carrick.
Good evening, Council. My name is Warren Murphy. I live on Barbary Lane, and I'm here to touch base on our Civic League and how this parcel will affect the neighbors near it if it is sold or rezoned. Civic Leagues notoriously have a very low attendance. Decisions that affect a large portion of the residents of a community should not be based upon the recommendation from an organization that only hears from a minuscule portion of its residents. When people were made aware of the plan to build a three-story structure, they attended the LCL Lanstown Community Civic League meeting on October 3 and voiced their opposition, so much so that Tony D. decided to defer the project to consider coming up with a two-story option. This option, however, was never presented to the community as far as we are aware. This was the second LCL meeting that Tony D. was at. The first was on July 13, 2017. The third was a meeting of the LCL Board Members, Officers, and the agenda was not advertised, so people didn't go, nor were the minutes posted. Excuse me. There's an alleged fourth meeting, but I can't find a record of it. All this begs a question. Why is the owner of a restaurant pitching this to the LCL and the residents? Why wasn't the initial conversation about changing the status of this property coming from the city that owns the property? It seems as if the cart is trying to pull the horse here. Isn't there a process for the selling of our city's property? It seems as if, for some reason, this is being pushed forward by a restaurateur, who's a wonderfully nice guy, I understand, and his attorney. And I urge the Council to resist the urge to be complicit in this. Besides the optics being horrible, why is this excess declaration and rezoning of this property a bad idea? First, any development and use of this parcel must enter in egress via Winterberry Lane. Our community is so densely populated now that we can't handle the excess flow. We can barely handle the flow that is currently there. The residents in the immediate vicinity will suffer from a lack of privacy, as the accompanying images show, which unfortunately you guys don't have the access to. There's droned pictures showing various elevations, and you can see, one, how densely populated our community is, and as far as the various elevations based upon different floors that you would be standing at, whose living rooms you can see into, whose kitchens you can see into, and it's just... It's just not how people should have to live. Our neighborhood has grown, and as the original kids of age, they are now driving and parking here as well. Overflow from this proposed lot that doesn't have enough parking spaces already will overtax our parking resources. At a time when Virginia Beach is buying properties to create green space, why destroy existing green space to build yet another redundant office building? Building the proposed structure on this side of Princess Anne will open the floodgates to more destruction of green space by setting a bad precedent. I was one of the pollsters that went door-to-door. Everyone I spoke to was against it. Please consider the wishes of your citizens above the corporate desires being suggested, and I thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much, sir.
Jennifer Carrick. And after Ms. Carrick is Jamie Dougherty.
Welcome.
Good evening, City Council, Mr. Mayor. My name is Jennifer Carrick, and I'd like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to show you how strongly we feel this land should remain under city ownership and stay a green space. The Lanstown community, especially Lanstown Meadows, where I've lived for 20 years, has lost a large portion of its natural buffers between our neighborhood and commercial development. I'd like to speak of how out of character this would be for the community and even for Virginia Beach. At the planning commission meeting, I was surprised to hear how this type of structure would be in line with the community and is already in place all over Virginia Beach. And then I heard the examples that were given. I was very curious about it, so I looked up all of the examples that were given of how this is already in place in Virginia Beach. None of the examples met up with the argument provided. None of the examples provided were accessed through a neighborhood. This would be the first structure built, as far as I can find, inside a community in Virginia Beach. Any development of this land into a commercial prospect would require the access to be on Winterberry Lane. This would be disruptive to our community. It would impact us in so many ways. We have children waiting at bus stops in very close proximity to that location, my younger daughter among them. When I walk out my front door and approach Winterberry, I can already see the parking lot and the building for Why Not Pizza, but at the moment, there is at least a field as a buffer in between. Soon, there's gonna be the development of the Bio Corridor, but at least that will be across the street. This bit of land should remain green to provide a natural buffer before encountering the commercial developments of Lanstown Commons and Lanstown Center. My husband and I, we chose this neighborhood 20 years ago because it was a great merge between farmland and suburbia. We used to enjoy taking our daughter to Princess Anne District Park when there were rodeos there. We used to see deer along the road fairly regularly, and I understand that progress looks forward development, but this area has lost so much green space already and will soon be losing more across Princess Anne Road. There are many places that would make a great location for Why Not Headquarters, but we have only one small parcel of land left to remain green near our homes. If this land were to be declared access and developed, it would set a precedent in Virginia Beach of allowing commercial properties to encroach into neighborhoods. It is not a good fit for this community. 100% of those reached in the door-to-door poll are opposed to the declaration of this land as excess and sold for further development. I believe this land should be preserved and support the neighborhood and community by remaining a green space. I believe there are more suitable locations for Why Not Headquarters that would not involve boxing and our children. Thank you very much, and please do not declare this land ready for redevelopment.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Jamie Dougherty. And then Keith Ingram.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Dougherty. I'm a 34-year Lanstown Meadows resident, and I'm opposed to declaring as excess that property at Winterberry and Princess Anne that you've heard everybody else speak on. I'm kind of the pull-it-all-together person now, allowing for the rezoning and especially the plan to construct a three-story building on the site. You've heard other concerned residents in Lanstown Meadows speak on the impact that the three-story building, parking lot, and additional traffic would have on our community. You've heard about safety and environmental concerns, quality of life of the people residing closest to the property. You've heard Ms. Murphy explain the poll results, that the misrepresented online poll actually showed 85% of 111 participants opposing the proposal. A more recent door-to-door poll showed 100... A more recent door-to-door poll showed one hundred percent of three hundred and ninety-seven Landstown Meadows residents to be in opposition. We've even heard, at the planning council meeting, testimony as to what a great guy and contributor to the community, Tony D, the owner of Why Not Pizza is. I myself had tremendous respect for Tony. Went at one of the Landstown Civic League meetings. He patiently listened to the concerns of the residents, including me, and returned fifteen minutes later to announce that he would defer his request until he could find a better solution. I love a hometown hero as much as anyone. I even love Why Not Pizza. But I don't like this plan to build a three-story building, the same three-story building we saw in that original drawing in my neighborhood. Getting into a little more depth, R.J. Nutter and others typically refer to this property as being adjacent to the Landstown Meadows neighborhood. At the planning council meeting, he offered examples from across the city to show that there are numerous three-story office-type buildings adjacent to neighborhoods like ours. Ms. Buckley just showed you research proving this to be false. The Winterberry Princess Anne parcel is unique and should not be compared to these other properties. By its very description in the ordinance, this parcel is not adjacent to our neighborhood. It is inside our neighborhood. Let me explain a little further. According to restrictions described in Exhibit B, which I'm sure everybody can access at some point, summary of terms, sale of excess property presented at the July eighteenth, 2017 public hearing, there will be no permitted access from the two most obvious places, the shopping center lot or Princess Anne Road. Consequently, the only access permitted by the city is from the most densely traveled segment of an already crowded residential street and its secondary intersection of Twin Flower Lane. You've patiently listened to my neighbors' impassioned presentations. Seeing is believing.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
I hope you'll drive by this week.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak.
Keith Ingram. And after Mr. Ingram is Tony Villanueva.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Keith Ingram. I live on Barberry Lane. I'm an eighteen-year resident in Virginia Beach and a ten-year resident and homeowner in Landstown Meadows. Virginia Beach is my home, Landstown Meadows is my home. You've heard pretty much everything I'm going to say. I didn't know that there were going to be that many people saying this, so I'm going to say it anyway because I'm here to represent. I'm here because I care about my community and I care about my neighbors. I'm here today because not enough of my neighbors are speaking for themselves. I'm here today because I don't see the city officials speaking for us, the residents of Landstown Meadows. On April tenth, I attended a meeting of the City Planning Commission where Mr. Nutter gave a wonderful presentation outlining the construction plans of his client. These plans outline the construction of a three-story building in our neighborhood, not adjacent to our neighborhood. If the entry to our parking lot is on Winterberry, to the parking lot is on Winterberry, which it is required to be, it's in our neighborhood. The construction of anything, let alone a three-story office building, is going to compound issues already experienced in Landstown. With anything other than the green space that it is, the traffic will increase. There'll be increased problems with runoff. Any type of business or office space will create not only an eyesore, but also privacy and lighting issues for the homes in the immediate area. I can't imagine a decent person, a good person, forcing this onto a neighborhood. Anyone who truly cares for our community, whether it be a businessman, a developer, a lawyer, or an elective representative, would understand and fight against this entire project from declaring it excess, rezoning it, or developing it. This property is the barrier between Landstown Commons and the neighborhood. Let it stay green. Let it continue to absorb the rain that will otherwise run into the adjacent lawns. Don't allow it to be developed and compound an already unbearable traffic problem. Don't allow it to be developed just to make a profit. If there's no benefit to our neighborhood, allow it to stay green. If I haven't been clear, I am opposed to declaring the property at the intersection of Princess Anne and Winterberry excess, and I'm opposed to rezoning it. I'm opposed to allowing it to be developed for the benefit of one businessperson or the banks at the expense of over five hundred families in the Landstown community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Tony Villanueva. And then the next speaker will be Cheryl Smith.
Welcome.
I'd like to address some of the comments that you all made at the April sixteenth informal. Regarding the Civic League Letter of Support, the letter of support was never approved by the community. I had to get a copy from City so we could take a first look at it. And please look at the Landstown Community Civic League Letter to Why Not PDF file for more details on that. About the Why Not Parking Study, the parking study was from eleven a.m. to four p.m. The application form states in writing, "including a possible urgent care facility." Urgent care facilities have different hours of operation. And if you take a legal document on one hand and then a lawyer's word on the other, I think the legal document wins. I got two supporting files on that. About the statement that there are some opposed and some in favor, full disclosure, the truth of the matter is, there's a majority opposed for this three-story building and with only entrance on Winterberry. On the right-turn-only offer, if you look at the entrance to Landstown Commons Shopping Center coming from damn neck to the left-turn-only, the left-turn-only is violated often. With the right-turn-only offer and the three-story building, parking on Winterberry Lane is going to be a premium spot for those who want to make a beeline to Holland, Holland Road. On the comments, are you going to be a good neighbor? Why Not is proposing a building so large it needs to borrow twenty-one parking spaces from their restaurant. Two members associated with Why Not crashed those opposed meeting, claiming that the city invited them. The unsolicited proposal stayed at eight hundred and ninety-two K from the assessed value of seven hundred and ninety K, yet they said they would come back with a two-story proposal if they could make a profit off that building. They came back with the same three-story building and the same eight hundred and ninety-two K proposal, even after they were aware of the majority opposition. And Why Not's taking our last piece of green space between damn neck and Winterberry on the Princess Anne side. And one more thing is about the robust Civic League comment. If you could please look at the Landstown April 2019 newsletter, and if anybody here can please tell me where the announcement for a Civic League meeting with Why Not is on that newsletter, I'd appreciate that.
Thank you very much, sir.
Cheryl Scott. Cheryl Scott. And then after Ms. Scott's, Lynda Russell.
Welcome.
Oh, thank you very much.
That was very nice.
Well, he's been coughing back there. So my name is Cheryl Scott. I've been a resident of Landstown Meadows for twenty-four years, and I'm here to talk about the property on the corner, as is everybody else. I did speak in favor of the project at the planning commission for numerous reasons. A lot of the material that was being set out there for me, well, did not make sense to me. So the traffic issue, there has been traffic studies done on Winterberry. It did not qualify for the traffic calming project. Monier did, and there are steps going forward for that. Also, I'm thinking that that property is prime property that the city does own, and the city is going to want to make money off that property. People talk about making it a park, this, that, the other. We have parks in the Landstown Meadows area and into the Lakes area. Some people use the parks, some people do not use the parks. Tony D has been a good customer, I mean, not customer, neighbor, and he does listen to what goes on at the meetings. Changes had been made to the building at one time. It was talked about having a two-story building, but it's not going to make anybody happy going forward being a two-story building. The city's not going to make what they need off of it, and I don't think Tony D's going to be happy with the way the building would be laid out. Also, this building is not going to be urgent care. What it is, is going to be his headquarters on the top floor, and it's going to be an entrepreneurship training center for his employees that work at the Why Not Pizza Next Door. People talk about him having to use his parking spaces over there. That's where his people park. Why not use those people? I do not see people parking on Winterberry. Yes, it's going to be a right-turn-only coming out of his building. He made that change after he heard about comments at the planning meeting. Nobody wanted the shopping center. Nobody wanted the CHKD building. No one wanted Why Not Pizza. All these things are making money for us, for us taxpayers, so we are not needing to take over the whole entire burden for the city. Yes, the biomedical is going to be across the street, and some improvements will come to that intersection once that biomedical building starts and gets underway. Yes, we probably need a traffic light, and I'm foreseeing that that traffic light's going to happen. I'm saying that I'm approving this project, and I hope you will see it in your ways to make it go forward. I appreciate it, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Lynda Russell.
Welcome.
I know I gotta adjust this thing, I'm short. I'm Lynda Russell, and I live off Shipscorn Road in Cardinal Estates. And most of y'all know me, and ones that you don't, you will know me, I'm sure. Want to talk to him, and that's a good thing. I am not a resident in this neighborhood, as I just said, but I do, I have an invested interest in that I own property in Mr. Jones's cemetery. And my husband's already buried over there, and I go over there constantly to see my husband. We came here over fifty years ago, passing through, and the military said, "Hey, stop moving you," and we chose this to be our home. And this will be our, you hear, forever homes. People talk about them, so that will be my forever home. Yes, I did drive through this neighborhood before. We had Princess Anne and Holland, and it was a nightmare, let me tell you. I only did it probably one or two times. So I am not, especially with the new roads, why would anybody leave Landstown and go through this neighborhood when you have a perfectly good road, damn neck that you can go forty-five miles an hour, get to there on a beautiful Holland Road, go right, left, straight, anywhere you want to go, okay? So no, I don't think any GPS is going to tell you to go through this neighborhood. I've sat before, you guys, in the briefing room most times, and I saw this guy be put up on the screen. And you talked about what he does. I don't think he's going to, like, change that right now. And if you guys think this is what we're supposed to do with the development, I think you should go through with this. And also, what he's doing now is like Chick-fil-A, and all those restaurants are doing that right now. It's easier for them to have their training there than it is. You guys have been in restaurants before, I'm sure we have. Somebody training somebody, and it takes up a lot of time. And like I said, I hope you will approve this for him. I think it will be a good thing. In fact, the King's Daughter's Hospital was supposed to go in my neighborhood. They talk about green space. I have no green space. Did you see me out complaining about all that went around me? No, you didn't, did you? I encourage that. This is where we need to go. And I do hope you approve it.
Thank you very much.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay. I want to thank all the speakers for coming and participating and getting your point across. Really appreciate it very much.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, I'm not going to speak. I just would like, particularly for those of you who are relatively new or brand-new, this is sort of a, an issue that got out of the right process. This applicant came forward in 2017 with what was called, I suppose, an unsolicited proposal to purchase this property for this use. And it came directly to the City Council in what would have amounted to everything being done at one time, declaring it excess and rezoning it in effect for this use. And I felt pretty strongly that that was not the way it should have been done, because normally, I think, we would have at least had a briefing of City Council to see if we wanted to consider declaring this excess before we got to that point. And so in 2017, it was deferred indefinitely so that the process could be followed. And after that, I did hear, just hear, that there was some consideration for this being a two-story building rather than a three-story building. And so I thought, well, I guess they're talking and so forth. But then I heard nothing. And I guess maybe I dropped the ball. I should have asked what happened, but I thought, well, this must have gone away. We haven't heard anything, until it came back on our agenda in just about exactly the same way it had come in 2017. And so this is really the first opportunity that the neighborhood has had to address the City Council on the very basic question of, should this be considered excess? It's really gotten complicated, because yes, there's an offer, a very attractive offer to the city for this property, and a use for this property of a fine gentleman who has a good business. And so that, you know, kind of maybe colors this a little. But I think the question before us, first of all, is, should this property be considered excess by the city and sold? Now, I just remember that it was one of the first things that the Council considered when I went back on the Council in 2006, was whether this whole Landstown Commons Shopping Center should be allowed. And there have been several different iterations that have come to Council throughout the time since that first issue of whether or not we should approve this shopping center. And I just remember that at each of those instances, the Landstown Meadows, Landstown Lakes community would be down here with their concerns, very concerned that the community not be adversely impacted. And I think we've always been very careful to make certain that we try to not adversely impact this neighborhood. This seems to be about the last piece. I think the thing that they have been referring to, when Why Not Pizza bought the property from, I guess, the shopping center to develop the restaurant, they needed a little more property for parking. And so they asked or petitioned the city to sell them a little strip of this parcel for parking, to give them parking that they needed for their neighborhood. But the city retained this piece for future consideration. So we're at that point now. And the question is, do we allow this last piece, which is that the entrance of this extremely dense neighborhood, to be sold, and specifically, this three-story office building be built there? I have driven through this neighborhood on a Sunday afternoon, and you can hardly drive through the streets because of the parked cars. It's a very dense neighborhood. We are concerned about preserving the quality of life in our neighborhoods, particularly in our neighborhoods of our very hard-working people like these folks. And it gives me a lot of concern. I'm very torn between a good business opportunity, economic development opportunity for the city, and this neighborhood, and this preservation of the quality of life for these neighborhoods. Some of you know, and actually, on the twenty-first, when this will come back to us for a vote for the rezoning, we'll also be hearing about a parking lot that we approved two or three years ago next to a neighborhood that's still having problems. And with that application, I pretty much promised myself no more parking lots adjoining residential. So here we are, faced with that same issue again, and I'm having a lot of concern because I love the opportunity of this corporate facility in our city, but I just have to say, is this the right place? say, is this the right place for it? When you've got, just in Landstown Meadows alone, over 500 houses. And if you consider also the Landstown Lakes component, you're getting up to almost 1,000 houses. This is a very dense neighborhood and I really hope you all will ride out there and look at it and imagine, because there are no three-story buildings on that side of Princess Anne Road from Lynn Haven Parkway or where that comes in and I think it's an assisted living facility, but all the way down to the municipal center, there are no three-story buildings and once you pass this commercial area of Landstown Commons, it's all residential or vacant property. And I wonder, you know, what is the precedent that we'll be setting for that vacant property if we approve this? So this has got a lot of parts to it and I just ask you all to consider it very carefully. I really appreciate the comments from the neighborhood. I look forward to looking at their, the presentations and the pictures and so forth. But this is extremely important and we'll be hearing it on the 21st for a vote.
Okay, John.
I had a question for the staff if I could, plus I would ditto Mrs. Henley's remarks, but I won't repeat them, but I do endorse them. But what is the width of the street of Winterberry Plus? Is this standard residential street? Is that about thirty feet? Am I pretty good about that? Once you get past the median strip?
Is that a question for the [inaudible]?
No, it's for the staff here. It's the city code. Well, while they're looking that up, the reason why I ask, one thing that's great about the phone, you can look up everything. You can look up what the average length of a car is and then you can look up the number of, and put two feet for a foot on each side for clearance and you have 4,000 linear feet of parking required for 200 cars. The average width of American vehicle, not counting the truck, is 5.875 feet. So if you put that together, when you add it all up, it's for the width of the cars parked on the street plus the width of cars driving down the street, it's 30.98 feet, which means really you've got to be a very good driver for two cars to pass. And that was the point I was trying to make.
[inaudible].
But please, I'm just asking the staff.
So, Mr. Ross, the subdivision-
I can't hear you.
The subdivision would have had to meet the required width of the pavement section should be, it would have been thirty, thirty-two feet, correct? Or thirty-four? Right, so if they're [inaudible]. And we'll make sure that we address that, but it's my understanding that it would be within either thirty-two to thirty-four feet depending on parking on both sides, which they do have.
Yeah, I just would like to know what it is because that just gets, they're just trying to understand the dynamics of throughput. But just to build on a comment of Mrs. Henley made, I know there's a famous quote from Mark Twain that said, "God's not making any more land unless you live near a volcano." That's my add-on. But the, but the point being is, as we have less public land, the public land that we have has an increasing value to the public. Because of scarcity principle, it's a fundamental law of economics. So I don't know how we value that and compete that against the development piece, but I think we have to remember and think about, as we do that, we can't go back. And I just think, and I am concerned about neighborhoods, that's why I'm interested. And I know when you can look at some development around the city, and I won't name any names because I'm not trying to impugn any development, it just happened, that the parking ends up in the neighborhoods. It just happens all over the city. People have lots of cars. You know, it just, you get, so I'm just trying to, I think we need to go out and look. I think that's true and it's not just during the day, it's the Cavalier Shores, but for a different reason. You know, and I think this gets increasing competition and maybe if we want development, Mr. Mayor, maybe we have to figure out, maybe, and I often favor this, the price that makes the building get down lower. But then, but the fundamental issue is, it's over density and it's not a green space and that green space has a high public value, higher than the economic development. And I think that's ultimately, I think, where this is probably going to rest. But I do appreciate both sides of the equation. We're trying to develop, but I do think we've made certain commitments not to add to the issues of a community that's already absorbed quite a bit of development. But I would like to have those statistics and if you have current traffic counts, I'd also like to know that because I have been an end now of that and that is a hard left turn. And did we actually, I don't recall getting a planning department assessment, maybe because the process, we didn't get one.
Right, well, that we will get when we get the, for the April, I mean, the May 21st meeting.
But my point being, it's a process improvement. I think we need to have that before we ever have the excess property because I think the residents need to have the benefit and the public does too of what the planning analysis is before we even declare it, have a public hearing for excess property so people know the consequences of what the staff thinks. Otherwise, it's going to be that night, they're going to get it on a Friday, we meet on a Tuesday and I'm sure other people have other things to do in the weekend and read planning department reports, but I do. But anyway, but that, everybody shouldn't. I just think, to your point about process, it won't have it all. But thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, not a problem. Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To the staff, I'm looking at the considerations here and the second consideration states if council authorizes the sale of the property, this will be a standalone parcel with ingress, egress restricted to one of two access points. A, from the adjacent shopping center parcel, or B, from Winterberry Lane. And looking at that property and having been out there to the restaurant there, it seems to me like there's access from the restaurant property to this property. And so my question is, why are we even considering access from Winterberry Lane?
In the proposal, there is no access to, in the proposal, there is no access through to the shopping center.
There is none or?
There is, there is no, there is no vehicular access. There's pedestrian access in order to-
But don't they, doesn't the applicant, doesn't the proposed applicant own the property right next door?
I believe there are other concerns that come up when we provide access through that property. I'm not sure.
That property is distinct from the shopping center.
Oh, I understand.
Okay, just like you knew.
I understand that, but it's the same owner.
Same owner, you're right.
Yeah, Mr. Williams.
Councilman, Mr. DeHan did address it's pedestrian access, not vehicular. They are sharing the parking and that's why there's pedestrian access to the building. That's in the count, that's how it is. There is a restriction with the owner as to the, that there's an agreement to not provide access to Winterberry out of the shopping center. And so there is a barrier, but it is pedestrian access. In other words, it's not inhibited by a ditch or canal or landscaping or fencing so that those that park-
But who controls that?
Who controls which part?
The pedestrian access.
That would be with the restaurant owner and whose same owner-
And if he owns this piece of property, then that could change if he wants it to, couldn't it?
I believe the shopping center.
That's right.
Mayor, Councilman, I recall, you know, this is all getting pretty foggy over the period of time that we've been through, but I believe there is a restriction on, on Why Not Pizza utilizing the Landstown Shopping Center there, only allowing it to access a restaurant and they cannot have access to that parcel. There was also a desire to make sure there was no connectivity between Winterberry and access to that shopping center's parking area.
Would, Ron, would you look into that?
Vehicular. That's what he's talking about.
Absolutely. It is vehicular. There's a restriction on vehicular and that's why the parking for the headquarters building only has the right in, right out of Winterberry. There's no vehicular connection to the restaurant parking and it's only pedestrian connection.
I think the question is, is why won't the Landstown Strip, whatever, the Commons area, why won't they allow access to that parcel instead of, that way they won't have an access on ingress from Winterberry. They can just access it from-
That's where I'm riding ahead.
That's what we're trying to get to. If he owns that property, then why won't the, whoever owns the-
With no access to Winterberry?
Right. No access to Winterberry, it's only access inside of-
I don't know if that's ever been explored.
Yeah, it might be worth exploring. But Guy?
Would not the question then be accessing Winterberry directly, admittedly it might be around your elbow, but you'd have direct access from the shopping center to Winterberry, which you don't have now?
So there wouldn't be-
No, there wouldn't be access.
There'd be no ingress on Winterberry.
In other words, that's the issue-
That was a proper, part of the original Landstown Commons.
That's the issue that I'm raising, Mr. Taylor, and that is that if, if the, what this, what this paragraph says is that they're going to have shop, access either from the shopping center or from Winterberry to this piece of property. My question is, if we eliminated the access, the possibility of the access to Winterberry Lane, would that make it more palatable? And because it's the same owner of the two properties, you know, that may be a possibility.
Right. The applicant, you know, we'd have to discuss-
I understand, I understand that, but I think it needs to be explored.
Okay, Jess then.
Ron, why are you, I mean, maybe you're not the one to ask. The other issue is with the buffering.
Can everybody just speak up a little bit? It's really quiet.
The other issue is with the buffering. What is, what is the plan as far as buffering against those houses directly behind it as well as buffering for the properties that are directly, I guess, to the right?
Mr. Williams, I can handle that.
Sorry.
That's in, that will be on the planning item. We apologize, we don't, we're not prepared to do the planning item today, but the landscaping that's provided in the rear is supposed to grow to a height that will buffer view from the third story. It's a, I forget what category it is, but it's supposed to grow to twenty to thirty feet tall and prohibit the view.
When we get our packet, can we, can you indicate the time in which it would take for it to reach that height as well?
Yes, Councilwoman Henley asked that question at the last meeting and we do have that, put that in the report.
Thank you.
Okay, Barbara.
I would like to get a copy of the transcript of the council meeting when we sold that strip to Why Not because I think we had a lot of concerns about what was going to happen to this particular property and that's why we only, we sell a strip at that time. So if we could get a copy of the transcript of that, of that hearing when we do it. But as I said, also on the 21st, we're going to be hearing from a problem property that we allowed a parking lot next to a neighborhood that has suffered greatly ever since. And one of the outstanding issues is still the landscaping, which, you know, it dies the first two years and so forth. And so to say you're going to plant a buffer that's eventually going to screen, it's not a simple thing. So we're going to have that one and we're going to see the experiences that we've had. Of course, that is an elevated parking lot. This one will be at grade level, but this one has that three-story building, which is a tremendous bulk. But anyway, I think if we have that transcript and also perhaps other items that have dealt with Landstown Commons since it was first built and all of the things that we have done over the years to accommodate the neighborhood, you don't have to give us all of those transcripts, but at least if we could have some of the background because there have been several issues.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, thank you all very much. Most appreciated. Okay, would you like to come forward? Okay, please state your name for the record, please.
David Giuseppe. I'm a resident of Woods upon a Grove. Mayor Dyer and ladies and gentlemen of the council, I've been in that neighborhood since '03, which is just connected to Landstown, so I use Winterberry regularly. But before I get in, so, Mr. Berluci, are you, are you sitting in or are you voted in? Are you a member now?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Yes, sir.
I was tuning into the informal session a little earlier. First order of business, you need a name tag. So I listened to your argument about Rose Hall being a neighborhood that suffers from flooding quite a bit. And I know that in that Dewberry study, there's other neighborhoods that suffer from flooding and you guys as a city, us as a city, you know, we're investing a lot of money to try and address those concerns, right? A lot of resources, engineering and trades workers to work on that. I personally saw Hurricane Matthew do a number to my neighborhood. I live in a cul-de-sac and since '03, never seen water up anywhere. I had water six feet from my, from my garage door. Not to say that that would happen because of this project, but it was just interesting because Holland Road construction was going on at the same time. There's plenty of EPA stats that talk about what happens when you build a parking lot and make concrete where dirt and trees were. I don't have those memorized, but I think that should be a part of what we, what we look at as this goes. And the other thing mentioned in your session was the tax, proposed tax increase to address flooding. I think as this is all assessed, we need to also think about how we're using that money to already work on the problem areas that we know of right now instead of potential problem areas. You also said that you want to, to work for the people. I think the people have spoken. We have spoken. We might not be as articulate as engineers or professional people who speak in front of crowds all the time, but we have the gut feeling and some facts, a lot of opinion, both sides, that this isn't right. We don't want a building in this small postage stamp of green that we have left in the neighborhood for various reasons. So, so I just want to say that the people have spoken. I implore you guys to listen and Virginia Beach does have 500-plus square miles of land. I know a lot of it is taken up and like you all mentioned, it's a hot commodity, so I just implore you, I am opposed, as you well know, but just to take a good, hard look and a lot of good dialogue at the end. I'm sorry, I popped up late.
Oh, not a problem at all. Thank you for availing yourself of the opportunity.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Can you come over, please?
Okay.
Let me just fill this out.
All right. Yes, sir.
My name is Robert Wilks.
Sir, could you come up? There's a microphone right on this side.
On the other side.
Right on the side there, sir.
Over here.
At front of us.
Spell that out for me.
Oh, I see it.
Just your name and your address.
There you go, sir. Welcome.
My name is Robert Wilks. I live on Winterberry Court and if I could, I'm not an engineer, but one thing I could point out to you is, if you're going down Winterberry Lane, you have that real sharp turn at the very top of the screen. There's five of those sharp turns on Winterberry Lane. When you get to those sharp turns, it's like the road narrows. You have a car parked here, you have a car parked here. You can fit one car in between. If you're coming this way, you're coming this way. You're always waiting for someone to be nice to you. Just this past weekend, I called my lawn boy to come to my house and someone flipped his mirror because, you know, they just didn't want to slow down. And one other thing that was brought up by Mr. Jones, now you've got Why Not Pizza at the top, you've got Winterberry Lane at the bottom. There is no way that we can handle that another entrance, exit to the shopping center. You're going to get people coming from Holland Road coming into the shopping center. You're just, we're already maxed out on the road itself. We just can't handle anymore.
Okay. Thank you, sir. And if you can give your information to the clerk, please? Yes?
Can I help?
Yes, you can. No, wait, did she speak all right? Okay, all right. Hi.
I'm Robin Knowles. I live in the neighborhood. I've been there for more than ten years, 3212 Winterberry Lane. I just want to, some other people that I were talking to- I just want to, some other people that I were talking to, that I just want to make a comment to, especially in regards to what the other two council members said, was that, oh, if we don't sell it now, the city council will come back and screw us later and sell it just to somebody else. And so I just want to make it clear that I think the residents of Lanstown Meadows specifically are looking at this as a long-term solution as far as not considering it access and opposing anything being built there. And I just want to make that clear, that we're not saying defer this, you know, and in three years, sell it to the next, you know, bidder. It's kind of a business paragraph where you're talking about people and profits, and, you know, Councilman Moss, I totally agree with you, where your decision is going to be that. It's either going to be profit over people or people over profit. And I think you should consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you can give your name and address to the clerk, please?
Thank you. So I got your address as you said it, but will you just put your name and your cell phone number on there?
Okay.
I'm sorry. So I got your address from?
Yes, sir, welcome.
Hi, my name is Eric Hembling. And I am an engineer, okay? If you put a building there, it's not a flood zone now, it will be a flood zone. It rains Sunday. I'm still waiting to cut my grass. Two years ago, it could rain, I could go out the next day and cut my grass. There's nowhere for the water to go right now. That area floods every time it rains. And I mean, it doesn't have to be a serious rain. It can rain and it floods. There's a trench that goes through the park next to my house. I used to look out there. If it wasn't a serious rain, I didn't see the water. It could rain a little bit now, and I see the water. That lake you see right there, it cresps when it rains. The last hurricane, two years ago, I drove through it, and the water was up to the door on my forerunner. I'm not even waiting for the next hurricane. If you take away that, which soaks up most of the water now, it's going to flood, and it's going to become a flood zone. There is no if, ands, buts about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Please give your?
Sir?
Sir, information.
Could you come up? Thank you. Just to feel for your name and your address and your phone number on there.
Okay, once again, thank you all very much for coming forward. And at this point, if we can go into appointments.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I nominate the following individuals to the boards and commissions, to the advertising advisory committee, council member Guy Tower, representing the Beach District Council member Exoficio, to the community policy and management team, Ginger Ploger, representing Stormwater Youth Services Commission, to Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, Guy Tower as a council member, Human Rights Commission, David Caliott and Kenick L., to the Minority Business Council, Sheila Johnson. And then the following city council liaisons, Jessica Abbott as council liaison to Clean Community Commission, Mike Berluci, council liaison to Human Rights Commission, John Moss, council liaison to Military Economic Development Advisory Committee, Louis Jones, council liaison to Minority Business Council, Guy Tower, council liaison to Old Beach Design Review Committee, Guy Tower, council liaison to Resort Advisory Commission, John Moss, council liaison to Stormwater Appeals Board, Mike Berluci, council liaison to Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation, and Guy Tower, council liaison to Virginia Beach Towing Advisory Board.
Okay. Call for a vote?
By a vote of 11 to 0, you have nominated those as read by Vice Senator Wood.
Okay, thank you. Is there any unfinished business? Any new business? Thank you one, thank you all. We are adjourned.